Welcome to the City Planning Commission Public Meeting. Madam Secretary, let's begin.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, March 4, 2020. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call up the role. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
The equorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, February 19, 2020.
On the minutes, all in favor.
Scheduling. On calendar numbers one, two, and three, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, March 18, 2020, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolutions, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 57. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number four, CD2C190011ZMK, in a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 50 Old Fulton rezoning. For a favorable report on calendar number four. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
I'm actually going to abstain. I believe that the development team is working to resolve concerns that were raised by the community. I hope that by the time this is announced, that'll be taken care of.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number four. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number five, CD2C200149ZMM, in a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 364 Avenue of the Americas rezoning. For a favorable report on calendar number five. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Wait, if you can let the tech room know that the mics are not turned on.
Yeah.
I think they're actually all permanently on.
Oh, okay. Edie?
Hot mic.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number five. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers six and seven, concerning Union Square South Hotel Special Permit. These items have been laid over. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers eight through 10. Calendar number eight, CD3N200221RCR, concerning 94 Glover Street. Calendar number nine, N200206RCR, concerning 445 Ellsworth Avenue. Calendar number 10, N20095RCR, concerning 526 Drumgool Road East. In a matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar numbers eight through 10. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers eight through 10 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 11 through 13. Calendar number 11, CD3N200255RAR. Calendar number 12, N200256RAR. Calendar number 13, N200257RAR, in a matter of application for the grant of authorizations concerning DSNY Staten Island Garage and Borough Repair Shop for adoption on calendar numbers 11 through 13. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 11 through 13 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 69. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 14, CD4C200188HAK, a public hearing in a matter of an application for a UDOT designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Old Stanley 6641 Chauncey.
We will have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Felipe Cortez, Drew Vanderburgh, Alice Friedman, and Lin Zheng.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Felipe Cortez, a borough planner at HPD. I am here to introduce 641 Chauncey Street, a homeownership project that will result in the construction of a new four-story building resulting in approximately eight new co-op units in Bushwick to be developed under HPD's Open Door Program. I am joined here by other representatives from HPD and the development team, who will introduce themselves in the presentation or when they answer questions as needed. HPD is seeking UDOT designation and project approval and the disposition of the city-owned property located on block 3444, lot 18. The project site is located on the southeast portion of the Bushwick neighborhood. The surrounding area is mostly residential with one and two-family as well as multifamily residential buildings ranging from two to four stories. Commercial and retail spaces can be found along Broadway. The development site shares the block with the Bushwick Multi-Service Center Building, which houses the Community Board offices, the New York City Human Resources Administration's Department of Social Services offices, and a food pantry. In addition, Riceborough's Moffett Garden, an assisted living facility for seniors, and the Eddie Harries Residential Facility, a man-only shelter, are also located on the same block. The project site is well-served by public transportation. The J, M, and C subway stations are located within walking distance from the site. Approval of the proposed land use actions will develop eight new affordable homeownership units under HPD's Open Door Program in a neighborhood where affordable homeownership opportunities are rare. HPD is excited about this project as it provides a unique opportunity to develop a long-standing vacant and underutilized city-owned lot with much-needed affordable homeownership units. At this time, I turn the presentation to Drew Vanderburgh from Riceborough. He will provide details of the proposed project.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I am Drew Vanderburgh, Senior Project Manager in the Housing Development Team at Riceborough Community Partnership. We are a nonprofit organization based in Bushwick. So let's see, advancing this slide here. This is the building that is proposed to be built on this city-owned lot. It's a four-story building, approximately 8,220 square feet with eight units, which will be cooperatively owned by the residents who eventually purchased the units. Three one-bedrooms, there's the square footage, two, three two-bedrooms, and two three-bedroom units. And we are still working with the architect to make sure that these units are very well-designed for family living for the long term. Eighty percent to 100% AMI is the affordability range in the building. And the amenities will include in-unit washers and dryers for every unit, bicycle storage, backyard accessible to the building residents. And also, the building will be designed to enterprise green community standards and using Riceborough's usual emphasis on sustainable technologies and design techniques in our And here's the site plan for the project. As you can see, the building there in the darker gray square in the front and a backyard there and a portion of the building that touches our right-next-door senior living facility as well. And just a draft of one of the ground plans, the first-floor plans, so you can get an idea of the size of the units and the layouts. This is a rear elevation of the building with stucco exterior and some large windows. And there's the backyard door, and you can see a person for scale purposes. And these are the side elevations as well, where we've considered the possibility of doing a community mural potentially on one of the sides so that the seniors next door can enjoy that. And because Riceborough has a lot of inroads with local artists in the community, and we've done that in the past. And here's the AMI breakdown again and just what that translates to in terms of sales price. Definitely super affordable for homeownership opportunity in New York City and in Bushwick, although, you know, we do understand that we have a lot of other projects for rental in the neighborhood for lower incomes, but these are the AMI ranges that we worked out with the HPD Open Door Program. So you can see the qualifying income for a family of four and the actual sales price for the units. So this is the recap of what we've presented so far here. We're seeking the UDOT approval for this eight-unit building because it is more than four units on city-owned land. There will be co-ops, which is very exciting. And there's your unit mix again, restated with washers and dryers and dishwashers in the units, bicycle storage, recreational rear yard, EGC standards, and financed with HPD Open Door. And here's the anticipated timeline for the project, where we currently are, March 4. And then we look forward to the City Council review and anticipated UDOT approval. And then, along with other scattered site buildings throughout Bushwick for homeownership, we would love to close this project in the fall or by before the end of this year and have it be marketed over New York City Housing Connect in 2022 and eventually sold and occupied in summer 2022. That's all.
Thank you.
Please take questions.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Thank you. I know we're only talking about eight units, but is there a Community Board preference here? Will there be any preference given to Community Board residents?
Yes. Community Board four will have 50% Community Board preference for the whole Old Stanley cluster.
Commissioner De La Ous. Is this working? It is now? Great. One question for HPD and then one question for Drew. Is this the first open-door project in Community District Four that the city does?
So now, yes.
Okay. That might help explain some of the questions that came up that we saw in their recommendation. You know, it's obviously a program that HPD is trying to implement more and more to address the desire for affordable homeownership, but I think a lot of the questions that you're seeing are kind of the standard questions that folks have often about rental projects. And then the other question I have is, do we, have you guys worked out the breakdown of the number of units at 80 versus 95 versus 100% of AMI?
Yep, we do have that. And at the moment, there are six units in the building for 100% AMI, and then one at 95 and one at 80. And we continue to work on the underwriting and work with HPD to define that open-door term sheet and make it as affordable as possible.
So you're hoping perhaps to add, to swap some of the 100 for maybe another one or two 80 and 95?
Could happen. And we know that that's also what Mr. Camacho from the community has been advocating for. So we still have another.
And we heard it from the BBT, too.
Yeah. So we're working it out at a citywide level and also within our own department.
Wish you a lot of luck with that. Commissioner Sirulo.
So eight units, eight potential co-op units. How does the management of the more common area or public space going to work? And is there a built-in structure? The owners themselves will be involved? I know it talks about sort of a front yard area that obviously will need to be maintained, a backyard area that will need to be, never mind the other things in the common areas of the building. How will that work?
Great question. So, do you want to answer? I can speak in terms of Riceborough's past experience with co-ops because we have been the manager for co-ops, and Riceborough has a subsidiary called Riceborough Management Corp. But also, we've had experience where those co-ops tenant-owned from the '70s and '80s didn't end up doing that well. And so we're hoping that this can be a new model of cooperative ownership for the 21st century that can really be, we can use democratic tools, provide homeownership trainings and, you know, maintenance trainings for the residents so that they can really take the lead on the management of their building. And that that co-op, which, by the way, we will be helping to create, we have our attorneys, part of the project will include the creation of the HDFC that the residents will join. But then, it's up to them how they want to manage those spaces in the building. And if they choose, they could bring Riceborough on as the third-party property manager, but that's not necessarily part of the project, and that's up to the residents.
And so from the, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad to see that that support will be provided. So in terms of the funds necessary to do the work that, the maintenance work that may be required to be done, even at its simplest level, where is that coming from? I know traditionally where it would come from, but what's the layer for the owners of these units? Do they have to pay in also common charges?
Right. The CAM charges, the common charges in maintenance are included in the budget before, you know, so when we say they won't be rent burden for their mortgage payments, that's calculated.
It's included in the?
Yes.
Yeah, I got you.
But it's an estimate, and we don't know what it'll actually cost them because that depends on their decision-making once they incorporate.
Understood. Understood. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Marine.
Oh, please. Please. But again, everything, the cost and maintenance of the, the cost of maintenance, like the common area, will depend on the HDFC that the homeowners will, like, build, basically.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Marine.
So Drew, if you could elaborate a little bit more, I'm a little bit confused in terms of the structure of the co-op. You'll have a co-op board. Is there a managing agent that the co-op is starting out with?
Not necessarily. Like I said, Riceborough could be brought aboard as the third-party manager, but this will be presumably eight new folks who have never met before, and then we'll bring them into a room and we'll say, "Welcome to your new building." And I'm not exactly sure how it's going to go down.
Well, I mean, typically with the program, I have experience with the program. Typically with the program, HPD requires, which is, maybe this is an HPD question, requires the developers set up the co-op with a managing agent for the first year that they can't change. And they change, the co-op board, once formed, once installed, instilled, can then change the managing agent. In this case, we're saying there's no managing agent, so I'm a little bit confused.
If you could introduce yourself?
Alice Friedman. I'm a Senior Project Manager for the Open Door Program at HPD. That is correct. We would expect the developer to put in place a managing agent for the first year, and the co-op board, once it's formed, would have the right to replace that managing agent after the first year.
So in essence, the responsibility of cleaning the front yard and the rear yard lies on the property manager that is set up originally with the co-op formation?
Correct, and funded through CAM charges.
That is correct.
And we do set initial CAM charges, and included in that are reserves, and, you know, depending on the project, we have specific escalators that the co-op board is required to increase per year.
Correct.
And so I'm comfortable that that would be Riceborough Management Corp. for the first year because we'll also be doing the leasing and marketing of the units. And so if there's some units that are still for sale, of course, we're going to be present onsite with a building right next door, and we can have our property managers do that work until the co-op is on their way.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I have questions relating to that line of thought, but also preliminary question. This is referred to in our materials as Old Stanley, as well as Chauncey Street. Who's Old Stanley?
Old Stanley is actually an old police station in Hong Kong, which, in a town in Hong Kong called Stanley, after which a bar in Bushwick was named at some point. But that's also just been the working title for this project for many, many years since Riceborough has owned many of these sites or managed many of these sites since 2030.
Is that why you're meant to do the planning?
But the HDFC that will actually manage the project is an already existing entity called South Bushwick Neighborhood Homes, HDFC. So I think from the public facing, after, we've been using that name for many years, but eventually.
Okay, we should just forget about Old Stanley.
South Bushwick Neighborhood Homes. So we've been in it.
Just to clarify, the bar was opened in 2014. This project has been around for longer than that.
No Hong Kong development in Bushwick, though. Yeah, so I have a question about the, we've had comments from both the Community Board and the Borough President urging that there should be permanent affordability here. And Drew, you alluded to the history of HDFCs sort of a generation ago and your hope that this is a new model for HDFCs. In addition to sort of chronic underfunding of building maintenance needs in the original wave of HDFCs, there was also sort of wavering or differing commitments between HDFCs to the notion that these are affordable housing assets and that when the current tenants are through using them, it's not an asset for them to, you know, maximize the value out of and disappear. That there should be, if not a legal commitment to permanent affordability, you should develop a culture within the HDFC that maintains a commitment to affordability going forward. I know that the program includes a 40-year commitment to resale restrictions. The 40 years goes by very quickly. What role, what can, what can we do to ensure permanent affordability, if not legally, certainly culturally, in this co-op?
I think I'd be curious for HPD's opinion on this, but I'll just say that from Riceborough's perspective and also a lot of the work we've done at Community Board four, we are trying to inculcate that ethos amongst the residents. And it'll be a conversation that we have with prospective buyers early on to say, "You have the option to renew and extend your tax break for another 40 years if you choose not to resell." And there's, you know, modest equity growth built into the open-door term sheet, but the idea would be at 40 years, they would stay and redo it for another 40. And we would let them know that that was our expectation and our hope upfront.
Okay. Keep reminding them as the years go by that this is what this is.
Right. Because that's part of Riceborough's mission, and that's part of why we're doing the project. But legally speaking, I mean, it's, it's still free country, so.
Commissioner Marine.
I know that recently the mayor announced that the city will continue to explore community land trusts. Is this something that could be put on a community land trust?
That question also came up with the Community Board, and Riceborough has been working a lot with other city agencies like Manny and Habitat for Humanity to talk about options for that. But because of the timeline of this project, we have not chosen that path. We didn't want to bog down these lots, which we've already had for many, many years, by getting embroiled in the legal creation of a CLT. Riceborough has other sites that we're looking at for CLT management and ownership, but this one's just not on the docket for that. But we still believe in the mission of that. I mean, do you want to add anything? Because we've talked to HPD about, could that work? But at this point, we just want to move forward with this as is.
Yeah. Lin Zheng from HPD. Yeah, the city is definitely exploring community land trusts. The mayor said it. And so there is a group, and, you know, we're looking into how we could actually implement it. But for this particular project, as you saw in the timeline, we really want to get these units online, and we don't want to jeopardize that any further. But, yeah, we, I think the city is definitely in the same line of, you know, permanent affordability.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edie.
Hi. Thanks for the presentation. Two quick questions. One, regarding the building facade, I understand the front and, I mean, the side and the back will be stucco. Will the front be stucco also, or will that be brick?
The front is like a gray brick, a dark gray brick.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then a second question I had regarding the affordability and land trust questions was whether or not, given that it is a co-op, whether any thought had been given to Riceborough maintaining title to the land and with those, with restrictions, and then having a co-op on a ground lease? And that way, you have some ongoing control and relationship to the co-op going forward.
It could be done.
And I don't know the term sheet and how that works, but it's something that might be considered.
Right. I would say the legal structuring of the deal is in its nascent stages, and the term sheet is also potentially a point of negotiation. So I think this is an interesting idea, not how it's currently planned, but.
Just a thought. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you to the applicant team. These are the only persons who have signed up to speak on this matter, but if there is anyone else who'd like to be heard, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 15 and 16. Calendar number 15, CD12C190377ZMM. Calendar number 16, N190378ZRK. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning 5914B Parkway rezoning.
Our first speaker will be Rachel Skall, and I'll also note that David Weiss is available for questioning.
Good morning. Are we able to? Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rachel Skall. I'm with Greenberg Charik. We represent SUW4LLC, the applicant seeking to rezone 5914 Bay Parkway from its current R5 zoning district to an R6 with a C24 overlay, which would be mapped for mandatory inclusionary housing. The proposed rezoning area is located at the northwest corner of Bay Parkway and Sixtieth Street in Brooklyn. It's a 10,000, approximately 10,000-square-foot parcel about two blocks south from Washington Cemetery and two blocks west of McDonald Avenue. The site is currently unimproved. You see the site there. Bay Parkway and Sixtieth Street are both wide streets. The development site sits across the street from a rite aid with an open parking lot, you see on the bottom right to the right there, across Sixtieth Street from a nine-story medical facility, and catty corner from a 90,000-square-foot high school, Bishop Kearney High School. Take you through the area a bit. You see the nine-story medical facility there, the rite aid that was just mentioned. The area further east where the rite aid is, is a C82 district. To the south of the site is R6 district with several commercial overlays. And then the areas north and east of the site are in the R5 district where the site currently sits. A few more photos. The rezoning would allow for construction of a building on the site containing approximately 48,000 square feet of floor area. Our client's design for the new building on the site has evolved to the current design of approximately 46,300 square-foot building. Approximately 5,800 square feet of the ground floor would be local retail uses. Approximately 6,200 square feet of the second floor would be community facility uses. We had been looking at doctors' offices. However, as we have told the Borough President at their request, we would be open to looking into renting that space to local arts or nonprofit organizations if we could make that fit. And then the approximately 34,300 square foot of remaining area would be residential uses. Approximately 34,000, or, sorry, approximately 10,000 square feet of that would be affordable pursuant to the proposed MIH workforce option. We heard Commissioner De La Ous's comments at review session on Monday. We did not hear any objections to the workforce option at the Community Board or Borough President's hearing or in our initial conversations with the council member. And because of that, we were a bit surprised, perhaps naively, to hear your comments, and we need some more time to look into this, and we plan to get back to you in writing. The new building is proposed to have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The unit mix for the affordable has not been determined yet and will be worked out with HPD when we do our regulatory agreement. However, we are aware of the Borough President's request regarding unit mix, and we do not have an issue with it. We just need to figure that out with HPD when the time comes. So the proposed new building would rise to a maximum 95 feet. However, significant setbacks are mandated by zoning.
Thank you. Questions?
So we think that this will form a good transition here because of, in part because of the setbacks that are required. So each side lot line is required to have eight feet of setback to start with. That's at the ground floor. And then because we are adjacent on two sides to that R5 district, we're required at a height of 45 feet to setback an additional, or to step back a total of 25 feet from those lot lines. And then we have our 10-foot street setbacks. And just as a matter of practicality, along that north, or I guess it's the east lot line, but the top of the page there, we would have a 30-foot setback starting above the ground floor to provide legal light and air for the residential units.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Capelli.
I would just like to say that I'm not convinced that workforce option isn't necessarily a good idea in this situation and in other situations that come before this board. So I would not be running away from it simply because a particular member raised a question. And I think that workforce is part of the options as under the MIH and there is a need for that kind of housing option in this city. And it requires a much more detailed policy discussion than has been had in the, certainly in my 18 months or so, or 20 months now on this commission, so.
Thank you. And we'd like to respond in writing to make sure that we have the amount of detail that's appropriate for that.
Commissioner Deloos.
I appreciate that you were listening intently on Monday. And you're absolutely right, Commissioner Camilla, that the workforce option is an option under MIH. I think, especially though in a community where the workforce option is market rate, I think you might, the developer, I think, would be wise to look at that. There's a lot of requirements that come with income reporting for MIH units and the developer can't get their C of O until they complete the lease-up of the MIH units. And so even if there, you know, even if there's like an ideological or philosophical appreciation for the desire to have workforce units, there might be a practical reason while in that community, the developer may seek to have something that's more affordable so they can meet their MIH requirements earlier and thereby not carry a lot of construction interest. So I would really, especially in a community board where there hasn't been a lot of experience with MIH, and so there's not really a track record of how well it goes. I'll just say that in other community boards that are much more proximate to transit and much more proximate to Manhattan, that units above 100% of AMI are actually harder and harder to fill and are delaying conversion of projects. So, you know, this is, this is coming, this input is coming at multiple, for multiple reasons. And so I think you really want to look at that marketing plan to make sure that you're going to achieve the goals. People kind of like look at the rent numbers and think it's going to be great, but then delay in rent up and then quick turnover means loss of rent. One thing that would be helpful to know is what experience does this developer have in the community, either owning other projects or developing other projects?
I'm David Weiss here. I'm from that community. I live in that community. I breathe that community. And yes, we developed many apartments in that community. None of them was made through a zone change or we had any tax benefits that we went through this route as affordable. But we're known in that community and we know exactly what the community needs. So this project is designed, in that matter, to fit for that community. When I say that community, it's not only Jewish community. There is a Chinese community right there that this is in between. This is very close to the subway, but it's still not a high-end area. But this is, this is my experience.
Commissioner Dweck.
While I have you up, I just want to reiterate the borough president's recommendation on the larger unit mixes, two and three bedrooms.
Yes. And we met, we were at that hearing and we responded in writing. And the answer is yes to everything. I mean, to all, we will comply with laws 92, 94, having a green roof system. So that will, that will comply with sustainability. And then we have rain gardens, which will be incorporated in the gardens all around the building. After all, it's my community there. You want to make sure it's beautiful. I'm going to be passing my car there every day, so I have to, have to make sure. I won't get any critics from my wife. Hey, what did you hear, right?
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Bernie.
Did you have other slides in your presentation that we didn't get time to see?
Regarding your comment, if I can, I know that you had a concern that the first floor didn't look like it was fit for commercial. This is just an illustrative rendering and we would expect to see more glass on the ground floor in the final design for the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
These are the only speakers who signed up for this matter. If anyone else would like to be heard, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 17, CD 3C 200077ZSM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 3 St. Mark's Place.
We will have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Adam Taubman, Ward Dennis, Morris Ajami, Jesse Levin, and available for questioning Valerie Campbell.
I'm Adam Taubman from Kramer Levin, Land use counsel to the applicants. We are here today seeking a special permit pursuant to section 7479 of the zoning resolution to facilitate the development of a 10-story commercial building at 3 St. Mark's Place. A special permit would allow a transfer of 8,386 square feet of development rights from the Hamilton Holly House, an individual landmark located directly across St. Mark's Place from the development site. It would also modify the applicable height and setback regulations on St. Mark's Place to facilitate our more harmonious relationship with the landmark building and other buildings on St. Mark's Place. Both the development site and the landmark site are located in a C61 zoning district, which allows a maximum FAR of six for commercial development. The development site is located at the northeast corner of Third Avenue in St. Mark's Place. It is currently vacant in anticipation of construction of the special permit building or if the special permit is denied and as of right building. The Hamilton Holly House, as I mentioned, is across the street and here you see a couple of vantage points from which both the development site and the landmark site are visible. And in just a moment, Ward Dennis will describe the restoration work that's being proposed to that building. The special permit would facilitate the development of a 10-story commercial building containing ground floor retail and offices above. The total proposed floor area is 50,314 square feet, inclusive of the 8,386 square feet that would be transferred from the landmark site. And that amount is equal to 20% of the basic maximum floor area, which is the maximum permitted under the special permit text. As a condition of the special permit, the owner of the Hamilton Holly House has worked with LPC staff to ensure that the work on the landmark building will restore the building to a sound first-class condition and will agree to implement a cyclical maintenance plan for the building. These commitments will be set forth in a restrictive declaration binding upon the owner and all future owners in perpetuity. LPC has issued the required report for the special permit, confirming that the proposed work serves a restoration purpose and that the height and setback waiver we are seeking contributes to a harmonious relationship with the landmark building.
Good morning, Commissioners Ward Dennis with Higgins Quays Barth, where the preservation consultants for restoration at 4 St. Mark's, the Hamilton Holly House. Photos up here on the screen of the house historically and on the right, the condition of the building prior to the beginning of this project. Hamilton Holly House was constructed in about 1830. It was originally one of a row of about 20 buildings along the south side of St. Mark's Place. There are two of these buildings remaining now. It is a, what we would consider a high-style federal period building, probably one of fewer than a dozen or so that are remaining and landmarked within Manhattan, particularly with this higher style of Gibbs surround. We have a lot of detail in the back of the package and I'm happy to answer more questions during Q and A, but just to go over the sort of high points of the restoration, existing on the left, proposed on the right. The proposed work includes substantial restoration to put it back to sound first-class condition. All of the work is being done with original materials, no substitute materials. So that's a real slate roof, rebuilding the dormers to their arch surrounds, new wood cornice, new wood windows throughout, completely rebuilding the original ionic portico entry surround and all-new custom cast and wrought iron railings and stoop at the base of the building. At the rear of the building, similar scope, rebuilding the rear facade with brick-to-mac, slate roof, et cetera. Again, we have a lot more detail and I'm very happy to go into more detail, but I'll let Morris talk about the new building. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Morris Ajami, architect for the project. In addition to the immediate benefits of the restoration work and the long-term benefits of the maintenance plan, we believe that the design that we're presenting is more harmonious with the landmark as well as with the neighborhood. As you can see on the diagram here, this is what we're proposing. The dotted line surrounding the drawing of the building is the zoning envelope, which we have here. I can pass these around later. We have a large model, but I think it's easier just to see these as of right zoning and then what we're proposing. I think one of the most important moves that we've made is that we've lowered the street wall height from 85 feet to 63 feet, which is a 22-foot reduction. And in exchange, we're asking for the waivers that you see in the gray portion, about a story and a half on the lower, or on the lower portion and two stories that are encroaching on the upper portion that are angled. So it's this piece here. But what that's enabled us to do is align the street wall with the height of the adjacent townhouse and pretty much the block scape, which you can see here. So that line of the street wall aligns more or less with the 62, 63-foot height of that entire block, as well as the block across the street. So we think that that's important and beneficial to the landmark. Here's a view from Astor Place. You can see the building in context, which we think works on St. Mark's as well as from Astor Place and on Third Avenue. We have a green, extensive green roof area. We're using high-performance glass as well as reclaimed recycled bricks made from post-industrial waste, which we've used on other projects, just some of the sustainability initiatives and techniques that we're using. Here's another view. I will also like to mention that after we presented the project at Landmark's and it was approved, we were contacted by various community groups and we work with LESBI. They had some questions about the amount of glass at the base of the building, which we've reduced and, you know, at the store level as well as on the first tier. And we changed the material on the upper portion to contrast with that as a result of the dialogue that we had with them. Thank you.
It's okay. I'll take just a minute or two to discuss the required findings. So section 7479 requires that where you seek a bulk waiver, including a particular heightened setback waiver, that that waiver be for the purpose of providing a harmonious architectural relationship between the development site and the landmark site. And as Morris explained just moments ago, the waiver we're seeking here does just that by allowing us to accommodate a lower street wall that aligns with the height of the landmark building and other buildings on St. Mark's Avenue. We'd also like to point out that the proposed actions in our review would not unduly increase the bulk of the proposed development, the density of population in the area, or the intensity of use on the block to the detriment of neighboring occupants. Both the floor area and the heightened setback waiver are modest, particularly in the context of the history of section 7479 special permits and the proposed buildings massing as consistent with the existing bulk built character in the area, particularly along Third Avenue. Any impact from reduced light and air will be more than offset by the preservation of the landmark building, which LPC has approved in the submitted report. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
What is the status of the restoration on the donor, on the landmark site?
Right. I'll let Ward take that question.
Work has been ongoing. The owner has been working on restoring the building. They got approvals from Landmarks a couple of years ago for part of that work. And then since then, as part of this application, we've been working with them to upgrade the level of the work. Most of the work on the interior of the building is completed. On the exterior of the building, the upper portion is largely completed. They will be installing new windows, different from the ones you see in the current existing condition photo. And the base of the building, including all of that wrought iron and cast iron work, has yet to be done. So that's, that's still pending.
So does the completion of that work, the restoration, the restorative work on the landmark, does that have to be done before you get a C of O on the proposed development? How does that work?
I believe that's right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
In order to get a C of O for the new building, the restoration work has to be complete and inspected.
And what LPC would certify that it's in total compliance with the?
They would issue a letter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
So I'm just looking at the community board's, you know, whereas statements and where basically they questioned whether the dedicated maintenance fund for an already restored landmark would justify the additional height and book. So what you're saying is that, in fact, not all of the restoration has been complete and even if some of the transfer of funds would go towards maintenance, that's not unreasonable and that's allowed under the permit.
Yeah. And the, not all the restoration work has been completed. There was a very substantial upgrade in the scope of the work as part of this application from what Landmarks could approve and did approve at staff level and at, under a certificate of appropriateness. And the maintenance requirement is separate from the funding that's set aside. That funding is set aside to give Landmarks a recourse, but the owner is compelled to maintain the building in that sound first-class condition in perpetuity.
Other questions? Commissioner Bernie.
I wanted to ask about the commercial retail. I mean, one of the unfortunate things about the public improvement, public space improvements on Astor Place has been the occupancy of entire ground floors by banks and, you know, drugstores and so on, that really don't provide any street activation. So I'm wondering, is there anything in the design that would encourage smaller uses, subdividing the space so that they're not occupied by a single occupancy that would favor local, smaller local stores?
I'll answer part of it and then I think you can follow up. Because I think the owners are committed to local retailers. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The owners are committed to having local retailers and we have designed the space so it can be broken into smaller stores. So that's the idea.
Will it be, is the question? Because if a bank comes in and occupies the entire floor, then that facade will become very inactive.
I was going to let Adam talk to this, but I think that they're committed to not having a bank there, but we can.
Right. So there's nothing in the application plans that restrict the retail occupants other than the underlying zoning regulations, but to the extent that the commission or the community is concerned with particular types of tenants, including banks, we'd be happy to consider those types of restrictions. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the discussion about the landmark work. The slides you showed, Mr. Dennis, of the before and after, is that, does that include the landmark work that, any of the landmark work that the owner of the landmark has already done independent of this project? Or is it after that initial round of work? And you'd help understanding the difference, you know, the?
Scope change.
Yeah, the scope change and how it relates to this application.
It is a combination of both. So the original scope of work included aluminum cornice, it included faux slate, rubberized slate at the roof, it included different windows, and it included a very different, not restorative balcony and railing system at the base of the building.
Okay. And is that on the left of this slide?
No. That's.
That's before any work started.
That's before any work was done. That was, yes, sorry. The left of, left-hand slide is before any work was done.
Okay.
The earlier photo, this photo more or less shows most of the work as originally approved by Landmark. So the windows that you see in this photo will be removed and replaced with better matching windows. The balcony that you see in this photo was what was originally approved by Landmark. We went back and did a very extensive research on similar buildings in the area, looking at the historic photos of this building and its sister buildings and use that with Allen Architectural Metal, who's the leading, one of the leading cast iron fabricators in the country to fabricate or design for fabrication new cast iron railings at the base of the building. So this sort of picket system that you see on the existing photo is what was originally approved by Landmark's and that, this is getting very detailed probably for planning, but the door surround that you see there is a more of a Greek revival door surround. The approved, the revised approved work includes the ionic columns, the engaged ionic columns, similar to what you see at the merchant's house nearby, and the very elaborate cast iron railing system and rebuilding. iron railing system and rebuilding the stoop. So there's a very substantial amount of work that is being done in addition to what Landmarks originally approved, absent the special permit.
Good. And then the maintenance commitment that comes along with this, does that come only with this application? Or is there a portion of a maintenance commitment that comes with the original approvals from LPC?
The ongoing maintenance in perpetuity, which runs with the property, is only with this application or some more special permit applications.
So that is one of the public benefits, if you will?
Yeah, absent that, owners are obviously required to maintain their buildings, but not to this level of sound first-class condition. And the recourse for Landmarks to enforce it is much greater with the special permit and with the ongoing maintenance agreement.
OK, good, thank you. And just for clarifying, I was watching the big screen when the little foam models went up, the little models in front of you.
I'll let Morris clarify.
I see the, what's the one in the middle?
This is an as-of-right scheme without any bulk waivers or any additional floor area.
OK.
So just to show that you, one, could build this building without a special permit, without transferring any air rights, and it is 22 feet taller at the street wall, and also more or less the same height overall.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Then I'll thank the applicant team. We will now turn to speakers who have signed up to speak, and we will start with speakers in opposition and then speakers in support. Our first speaker is Alexis Richards.
My name's Alexis Richards. I'm from the office of Councilmember Carlina Rivera. Closing. I'm here to provide testimony on behalf of City Councilwoman Carlina Rivera, New York State Assemblymember Deborah Glick, and State Senator Brad Hoileman before the commission. Thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding the proposed transfer of 8,386 square feet of development rights from the landmarked Four St. Mark's Place, the Hamilton-Holly House, to the newly proposed development at Three St. Mark's Place. The proposed massing that would be built with approval of this permit would be 20% larger than an as-of-right development. Also, the bulk waiver is proposed for the narrow street portion of the development site on the St. Mark's Place frontage. This development would be, would clearly be out of context of the landmarked Four St. Mark's Place, as well as the surrounding streetscape and character, and we urge the City Planning Commission to deny this application. Located at the gateway to the East Village, this proposed development at Three St. Mark's Place would seriously impact and conflict with the landmarked Hamilton-Holly House, and the proposed noncomplying bulk would be out of context with the historic St. Mark's Place corridor as a whole. The developers' proposed repairs and perpetual maintenance fund for Four St. Mark's Place, where Elizabeth Schuyler Hamilton, the widow of founding father Alexander Hamilton, once resided, are not sufficient and do not measure up against the incongruity this proposed building would create. We do not believe that, in this case, the disadvantages to the surrounding area will be offset by the advantages of the landmark's preservation. It's clear that the developers, in the wake of numerous concerns raised by neighborhood groups, Community Board Three, several members of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and elected officials, have not proposed or addressed any serious appropriate conditions and safeguards that the 7479 permit stage should be considered in order to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area. Little outreach has been done to the impacted community members and groups, and only minimal changes have been made since this project was unveiled, and the proposed development would still penetrate the maximum front wall height and sky exposure plane. Our offices will continue to speak out to ensure that historic streetscapes and communities are considered against out-of-context commercial development, just as we did when we fought against the construction of a hotel next to the Merchant's House Museum on East Fourth Street last year. We do hope that the City Planning Commission will seriously consider these concerns as you hear this item, and that the commission will vote to deny both the transfer of development rights and the modification of both provisions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, thanks for being here. And not only speaking on behalf of the council member, but the other local elected officials. Has there been a dialogue between your office and the other elected official's office and the developer to try to come to some agreement on the areas that are greatest concern to the community?
So I will caveat with saying that I'm just here as a representative, speaking on behalf of all the electeds. And while I am not privy to private conversations, I do believe there has been some effort made, yes.
OK. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Harry Bubbins, who will be followed by Mary Fran Loftus. Yes, if you could submit it to the secretary, she'll distribute it to the commissioners. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Harry Bubbins. I'm testifying on behalf of Village Preservation, the largest membership organization in Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo. We strongly oppose the transfer of air rights from the landmarked Four St. Mark's Place to the proposed office tower at Three St. Mark's Place. The potential benefits to this individual landmark in the neighborhood are simply not worth the trade-off of the air rights transfer. Most of the restoration of Four St. Mark's Place, which was approved by the Landmarks Preservation Commission in 2016, has already been executed, including the roof dormers, the installation of the cornice, repointing and repair of the brick, replacement of the windows and doors, replacement of the transom light at the entry, installation of new metal railings, and repair of the stoop. The applicant is simply seeking to get after the fact credit and financial benefit for work already done and paid for, and extra square footage for additional work, which is not needed and certainly does not justify the air rights transfer. We have serious concerns about the planned office tower on St. Mark's Place at what is considered the gateway to the East Village. We believe that an even larger office tower at this very significant and prominent location in the East Village would have a detrimental impact upon the character of the neighborhood. It should be noted that we do not object to the heightened setback waivers being sought. While the applicant has had some additional restoration to Four St. Mark's Place beyond what was approved in 2016, part of the beauty and significance of the landmarked house, which our organization proposed for landmark designation in 2002, are the changes it has undergone over time. To simply erase all those changes as a means to gain approval for the air rights transfer is unnecessary and wrong. We are huge supporters of historic preservation. The nearby Merchant's House Museum is a perfectly preserved slice of New York from 200 years ago. That is not what this house, which is not open to the public, should be or needs to be. Erasing almost 200 years of history to create a facsimile of what the building looked like when built in the early 19th century is neither desirable nor would justify the air rights transfer, whose real purpose is to simply increase the size of the office tower. The special permit is not necessary to fund needed or even necessarily desirable restoration work. This neighborhood is undergoing what we and many others see as detrimental changes to its character, as the city seeks to extend Midtown South and Silicon Alley to the area. We continue to petition for landmark and zoning protections for the area to prevent that. However, we do not want to accelerate that process by allowing this tech office tower to increase in size by 20% beyond what the existing zoning would normally allow. We call upon the commission to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bubbins. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. I'm just wondering, you've seen, hopefully, the variations, the as-of-right massing as opposed to what is proposed. What is your appraisal of the as-of-right massing? Is that something that you would prefer as opposed to what's being proposed here?
Well, those things that were meant to convey a particular story. The fact is, they're seeking to build 20% larger than zoning allows. That is what we are opposed to. And in addition, we are working for more contextual landmark and historic designation for the area. So that corner should not have another tech office tower 20% larger than allowed. That's the bottom line.
Commissioner Levin.
Even if the cost of this position is that you end up with a tech tower with as-of-right... I guess my question is, much of your testimony appeared to really advocate for nothing happening here. But, of course, there is an as-of-right development scenario that might very well come to pass. So if the choice is between, is the choice between no development at all and the tower that's on your button? Or is the choice between an as-of-right development of some kind?
Well, I didn't say anywhere that we were advocating for nothing to happen there. The position before your body now is to permit a 20% larger tech office tower, and that's what we are opposed to.
OK. A 20%? That's correct. It is more bulk, but it is being, as a result of this process, being shaped in a way that some might consider better suited to the context than the as-of-right scenario.
We don't think they can shape a tech office tower 20% more than is allowed, and they should not be permitted to do that.
OK.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bubbins. Our next speaker will be Mary Fran Loftus, to be followed by John Center.
My name is Mary Fran Loftus. I have lived at Third Avenue and Ninth Street for over 25 years, and I'm against the proposed air rights transfer from the landmark St. Mark's Place to a new commercial office building at Three St. Mark's Place. This does not serve the public interest. An oversized office tower does not belong on St. Mark's Place. Increasing the size of an out-of-character development by 20% disparages our community. This corner is considered the gateway to the East Village, known for its rich cultural history in art and music. As Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer stated in her decision, "The building's stated use and design is devoid of any acknowledgement of this fact," end quote. The Three St. Mark's Place developers should build the best building possible, just 8,386 square feet smaller and without transferred air rights. A smaller building creatively designed potentially could relate better contextually to the landmark for St. Mark's Place. In this neighborhood, which the NYC Parks Department classifies as underserved with the amount of available public open space, we don't need more private roof terraces or amenities and passive recreation on private commercial office buildings. We don't need more commercial office space with 15- to 16-foot floors. The additional square footage requested in this proposal is equivalent to 11 one-bedroom apartments, which would better serve our community. The Hamilton-Holly House at Four St. Mark's Place has rightfully been a New York City landmark for 15 years. The meager 5% of this, from the sale of the air rights that would go towards maintenance, shows that this proposed transfer offers relatively little benefit to the public and little true preservation purpose. To my eyes, the only purpose of the planned transfer is greed, thereby lining the pockets of the developers. Rather than transfer air rights, we need improved zoning and landmark protections in this area. I fervently urge the community to be true city planners and protect the people you have been appointed to serve and whose taxes pay your salaries. Join the unanimous decision of Community Board Three, and Borough President Gail Brewer, deny this proposal. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Loftus. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is John Center, who will be followed by Elizabeth Disregard. Disregard, I'm sorry.
I'm John Center, an East Ninth Street resident for more than 25 years. I'm opposed to transferring air rights on St. Mark's Place from number four to number three. I urge CPC to concur with recommendations by Community Board Three, Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, and Councilwoman Carlina Rivera, and reject this applicant's request. Many neighbors share my view that it would be bad enough that the East Village gets yet another large commercial office building. While rampant out-of-place commercial development continues from Union Square to Astor Place, numerous nearby storefronts remain vacant. Even a large chain drugstore permanently closed this week. We need better zoning and landmark protections here, not an annex to the Death Star at 51 and Astor Place. Little can be done to control as-of-right projects, but to add another 8,386 square feet by a transfer of air rights to a strictly commercial office building planned for Three St. Mark's Place is wrong. Reeks proposal reeks. Simply put, this proposal is about speculation and greed. The developer already has spent thousands of dollars to lobby officials to support an unnecessary giveaway from the public for his private multimillion-dollar real estate deal. Section 7479 of the zoning resolution is important, but not appropriate in this case. We don't need to increase an already-high FAR from 6.0 to 7.2. The developer claims that with the air rights transfer, his new building will better fit in with other nearby buildings. I challenge this flawed, incomplete notion. His rendering was on the cover of their presentation. Several of the buildings the developer wishes to fit in with are oversized from use and abuse of the community facilities bonus section of NYC zoning resolution. This applicant's proposal does not provide any of the public benefits that those community facilities buildings do. A rendering from the west side of Third Avenue, between St. Mark's Place and Ninth Street, looking southeast, would show the proposed new tower looming over low-rise buildings lining the south side of St. Mark's Place. I appreciate the historic repairs and renovations that the corporate owners have made at the landmarked Hamilton-Holly House. However, the promise of a continuing maintenance plan in exchange for a transfer of air rights is not enough. Two private developers, not the public, would reap the benefits resulting from approving this plan. When I worked on the Broadway production of Hamilton, I learned about Eliza Hamilton, who with two of her children, lived at Four St. Mark's Place for nine years. She truly was a remarkable woman. Her former home is part of our community's rich cultural history. Of course, I can't put words into her mouth, but if Eliza were alive today, I believe she'd reject the proposal unless it were for an orphanage. It's not, so please reject the proposed transfer of air rights.
Questions for Mr. Center. Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Disregard, who will be followed by Rick Serapica.
Thank you. I've been a resident of the East Village for 30 years, and I've watched Third Avenue turn into a corridor of big boxes of glass and steel, where often, yes, the ground floor shops are empty, big empty glass boxes, that make it a very cold experience to walk there. St. Mark's Place is much more than the Hamilton House, and while I respect the importance of a house like that, let's remember it's in the context of a block that is famous throughout the world as the center of music and art and culture in the '60s and '70s. A big glass box doesn't belong there, and we have to look at the bigger context, not just one building, but everything else that's around there. You asked about compromises that could make this air rights transfer valid. I don't see why we need compromises. 20% more is too much. And the problem is, the next time someone comes to you, then that's already set a standard. What we'll see is just more and more of the same. We love our neighborhood. I wish you could have seen the passion at the community board meetings. Those people cannot, all of us can't necessarily come at 11 o'clock in the morning, but it was standing room only of people who love the East Village and don't want to see this happen to it. You know, there's much more at stake here than whether you pretify the ground floor of this building. It's about changing the character of an important part of New York City. I really hope that you recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Nope, you're off the hook. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Rick Serapica, to be followed by Catherine Wolfing.
Hello, everyone. I'm from Castleon Real Estate Partners, and we are advocating for the transfer of the air rights, but for two very, very specific reasons that have more to do with forcing marks than three St. Marks. About three and a half years ago, Castleon purchased Four St. Marks. The building was in a state of tremendous disrepair when we purchased it, as the before photos demonstrated earlier in the presentation. We worked for about eight months with the Landmarks Commission to come up with a restoration program. We spent about a year and a half executing that program and about $4 million doing so. While we were completing the program, we continued to speak with the preservationists at Landmarks, and we continued to do research. As you can well imagine, a building that's over 150 years old, it's sometimes difficult to determine exactly what it looked like originally and exactly what the materials were. So we continued our homework. We continued our research. So we executed the original program of restoration. That was completed about 10 to 12 months ago. We then worked with the preservationists to come up with a defined program of additional improvement, some of which Dennis spoke to earlier today. More historically accurate windows, trim, an entrance door, custom ironwork at the base of the building, and stone at the entrance of the building were all identified as being perhaps closer to what was a advocating for this transfer of air rights. Frankly, as owners of Four St. Marks, to make these further improvements, to get the building closer to what it once was, we need the funding that will result from the transfer of those air rights. For us, it's really as simple as that. Secondly, and I think maybe more importantly, to the building and to the area, is that if we commit to this more rigorous maintenance program that Landmarks is mandating, which, by the way, we will have to if the special permit is granted and if the air rights get transferred, we can all be sure, we as owners and the neighborhood, that the building will never look the way it looked when we purchased it. The building was nothing less than a blight when we purchased it. And if you're talking about neighborhood integrity, to me, that's incredibly important. It's incredibly important not to let these buildings fall into disrepair. Also, keep in mind, sorry, keep in mind that future owners will be bound by the program.
Please, we limit everyone to three moments.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker will be Catherine Wolfie, who will be followed by Tara Duvivier.
I live at 107 East 10th Street in the St. Mark's Historic District, and I am a parishioner at St. Mark's Church in the Bowery, located at the corner of East 10th Street and Second Avenue. Living in a historic district for more than 40 years has helped me appreciate the benefits of such designations in preserving our city's neighborhoods and flavor. The East Village is a unique neighborhood, reflecting the diverse immigration from many countries to a neighborhood where people lived in peace. The construction site at Three St. Mark's Place is across from the Cooper Union's historic main building, where President Abraham Lincoln gave a famous address in the 1800s. Granting air rights for this construction will impact this building and the Astor Place area, which is already overcrowded. A larger building will place additional burdens on subway and bus service, not to mention to pedestrians on already overcrowded nearby sidewalks and traffic on nearby streets. We already have NYU and Cooper Union dormitories and classrooms within a few blocks of this location. Other infrastructure affected will be water supply and electrical service. There may be others I haven't thought of. I strongly urge you not to allow this air rights transfer to take place at Three St. Mark's Place.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Tara Duvivier, followed by Deborah Solomon.
Morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I am Tara Duvivier, and I will be giving testimony on behalf of the Manhattan Borough President, Gail A. Brewer. I'm here to speak against the land use application that would transfer development rights from the Landmark Hamilton Holly House to Three St. Mark's Place. This transfer will facilitate the construction of a 10-story office building with ground floor retail at Three St. Mark's Place. Proceeds from the sale of the development rights will be used for historical restoration of Hamilton Holly House to its original 19th-century appearance. We do not think the proposed development meets the findings necessary to approve this action, as it unduly increases the density of population and intensity of use to the detriment of the surrounding area. If this development is built, the intensity of use will increase significantly, particularly during peak hours of the day due to its planned office use. There have been longstanding community concerns around development pressures resulting in taller, bulkier buildings in this area, and this project is yet another example. St. Mark's Place largely consists of four- and five-story buildings and has tremendous cultural significance to the area that is being lost to development and changes in use. While we are a strong supporter of landmark preservation in New York City, we believe preservation should be done to maximize public benefit and not just enrich private developers. Hamilton Holly House, while it would be restored to its original appearance, is privately owned and is not accessible to the public. The applicant is developing a very large commercial development on a corner that would not be accessible to the community unless there are employees within the building. The location is considered a gateway to an area known for its rich cultural history in art and music. The building's intended use and design is devoid of any acknowledgement of this fact. The applicants have done very little consultation with the community to address concerns over this development. There is an opportunity to provide a greater community benefit, given the history of the area. The applicant could work out a plan that includes local hiring and construction job training. They could work with the community to attract local businesses to occupy the retail space. They could offer space within the building for community use, and most importantly, they can work with the community stakeholders on a building that is much more contextual to the area. While the applicant may not be required to make this effort, as an organization presumably making a long-term investment in a neighborhood, it would be of greater benefit to them and the community to develop a project that is contextual and incorporates the community's character and history. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, since you were just reading on behalf of the Borough President, wasn't going to put you on the spot for questions. Our next speaker is Deborah Solomon, to be followed by Jacob Ford.
Good morning. I, my name is Deborah Solomon, and I live, work, and ride my bike in the East Village. I'm opposed to the transfer of air rights. Living four blocks from this site, I can say the increased size of this building will only further destroy the character of our neighborhood. It's absurd to say that a larger building will fit better into our neighborhood. I don't know if any of you have been to the Sockman recently or walked around on A Street, but this building would be out of character. This bizarre logic should tip you off to the builder's actual intent. We need to landmark the entire East Village. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Solomon. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jacob Ford, to be followed by Susie Schrop.
My name is Jacob Ford. I live at Five St. Mark's Place, and my exposed brick wall in my apartment actually abuts the wall that this building would share. I've had the interesting experience, since one to three St. Marks have been demolished, of becoming a sort of impromptu entrance to the East Village, and I've been able to see how important that is, whether it's for SantaCon or for NYU students or tourists. I think it's very important that the entryway, the gateway to the East Village, especially on St. Mark's Place, be something that makes contextual sense, that not be lopsided, and that it kind of showed them the character that they're about to encounter. I can appreciate that this proposed new building is brick. I can appreciate architectural decisions that have gone into it, but I think it's just, the proposed air transfer would make it far too high, out of context, and make little sense in the neighborhood. And I also agree with the fact that the recipient of the money from this air transfer is a private building. It may look nice, and we appreciate it, but it won't benefit the public to be able to go into the Holly Building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ford. Commissioner Levin.
I just have a question about your own building. It's landmarked also, is it landmarked, your building?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Thank you. It's another piece of striking neighborhood context.
Yeah, we love the blue crown. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Susie Schrop, to be followed by Laura Sewell.
My name is Susie Schrop. I live at Eight St. Mark's Place, and this may marks my 30th year on the block. I'm here to oppose the proposed air rights transfer from Four St. Mark's Place to Three St. Mark's Place, which would allow an already ill-conceived project to be built 20% larger. I've been an active member in the Block Association. I'm the Tendons Association President, and I'm one of three Democratic County Committee Members in the district. I studied art and design in Austria with six years of art history, and I've worked on various facade restoration programs of historical sites dating back to the 1500s. The entire stretch of St. Mark's Place is rich in history, and every building tells a story. The out-of-scale office tower development on the corner of St. Marks and Third Avenue is a death knell to the block and the neighborhood. The development already wiped out a 200-year-old building, paving the path for what's called Silicon Alley and Midtown South. What comes with this conversion is the conversion of the neighborhood full of life, creativity, personality, into another cold business district. The air rights transfer and 20% height bulk bonus are an insult to injury. This project is not about preservation. It is about the profits of the developers of Three St. Mark's Place and the owners of Four St. Mark's Place, who will walk away 4 million richer. There is no enforcement of the promises on the table. I've included images of Four St. Mark's Place, which already tell us what preservation will look like. The renovated building is covered in hideous illuminated signage that belongs into Koreatown, sloppy-looking banners, and an oversized, deflated flamingo pool floaty that has graced the first-floor balcony for four months now. We see how little the owners care about preservation and the community. We will be stuck with terrible out-of-context overdevelopment and the continued destruction of a vibrant neighborhood. I stand with my community against the proposed air rights transfer. Please do not grant this air rights transfer real estate deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Schrop. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Laura Sewell.
Hi, I'm Laura Sewell. I'm the Director of the East Village Community Coalition, and we heard over and over again from our community regarding this particular project. Community board hearings on the subject, both landmarks and land use, exceeded capacity. They were packed. People waited for hours for the chance to say pretty much the same thing. Our community simply does not find enough public benefit on offer for this project, and CB3 agreed. Limited additional work and a maintenance plan for the recently restored Hamilton Holly House does not offset the impact of adding an oversized commercial property here, at the expense of a neighborhood already experiencing extreme development pressure. This corridor serves as a gateway to the East Village. St. Mark's serves as an east-west corridor for residents and visitors alike. Tourists stop and spin the cube sculpture on their way to see Stomp, enjoying the open plaza around the historic Cooper Union. Any new construction here should reflect the character of the Lower East Side, East Village Historic District, and this project simply does not. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Sewell. Thank you for the testimony. Those are the people who have signed up to speak. If there is anyone else present who would want to be heard, please come forward now. The public hearing is closed. Madam Secretary, any other matters on the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Public meeting is over. Tara Duvivier, fabulous person, and Gail Brewer, she like me, is a Cooper Union resident.